Needham Select Board. My name is Mo Handel, Chair. I can confirm that all members of the Board are participating through Zoom U.S. Mary Ann Cooley briefly left the room, but she will be right back before we start the substance of the meeting. In addition to the Town Manager Kate Fitzpatrick, there are various members in the town staff who are present and will speak on Zoom U.S. and will be recognized by name if they speak. I will note that the Assistant Town Manager for Finance Dave Davison is here, as is Katie King, the Assistant Town Manager for Operations. This open town meeting of the Needham Select Board is being conducted consistent with current state regulations, and it's being recorded. It's being convened through Zoom as posted on the town's website, which also spells out how the public can gain access to this meeting. Virtually all attendants are here by video conference. Public access does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. I do not believe that one of the items on our agenda does include public participation or comment. Please also be aware that others may be available to see you. Anything that you share or state may be captured by the recording and become a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting are on the town website. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced after they conclude their remark. Each Select Board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. For those on this meeting, please mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps assure accurate minutes. Please wait until recognized by name, and please also state your name again before speaking. And finally, each vote taken at this meeting will be by roll call vote. Now, before we start the formal agenda, I'd like to mention the work of town staff over the past weeks that made for us very successful town meeting, and for the first time in memory, a meeting out of doors. Many helped, but I especially want to thank Charis Lustig, Director of Finance Administration for Public Services, for her leadership in making that all come together. You made the town proud, Charis. You reflected well on the town staff, and it was a very successful meeting due in large measure to your efforts. So again, thank you. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for a change of membership interest for the manager of Spiga, which is located at 18 Highland Circle. And I understand Stephen Miller, who is the attorney, and Marissa Ioko, owner and proposed new manager, are here. Stephen Miller may have somebody else in his stead. The floor is the town managers to tell us if we have a complete application.
Yes, we do.
That being the case, is there any presentation the applicant cares to make?
Yes, it is Stephen Miller.
Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm here with Marissa Ioko.
Hi.
And so with the request is, Marissa is currently 50% owner, beneficial owner of Spiga, and has worked out an arrangement to buy the other 50% owner, Mr. Arrieti, out. So she could be the 100% owner, but as part of the transaction, she is, wants to transfer, upon approval, transfer 30% to Francesco
Jacovito.
Ioko Bitti. So the end of, the final transaction would be Marissa would own 70% of the beneficial interest, and Francesco would own 30%. Marissa would be the manager of record and the LLC manager. Just by way of background, Marissa, this was her second stint at Spiga. She came to Spiga for two years as a consulting chef in 2009 and 2010. She has exceptional experience. For any of you that have not been here, she was executive chef at very well-known restaurants in the north. And Umbria Mare Pareco, she was the executive chef at Gennaro and Scopa. She's been back at Spiga since 2017 as the executive chef and general manager. And she had the opportunity to purchase Mr. Arrieti's 50%. The transaction is a total of $130,000. She made a down payment of $2,650, and she'll have 36 consecutive monthly payments of that amount to equal the $130,000 purchase price. There are no changes planned to the operation. It's will remain exactly the same. It's a very high-end Italian restaurant. I think as some of you know, she has written several cookbooks and been on several TV shows and has been a panelist in his very books. I don't know if we lost you. She has a great reputation. There's a great following. The only thing they do plan, and they will come down to City Hall and file the appropriate paperwork, they would like to start opening for breakfast at some point in the very near future to hopefully make up for a little bit of the past several months where they've been shut down like everybody else. So they think they give it a try. Obviously, there'd be no alcohol. They're planning opening at 8:00 and subject to the town's approval. That's something that, that's the only plans they have to make any changes to the existing operation. Marissa's here with me and available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Marissa, you've been before us before, I think.
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Yes, yes.
That's great. A matter of protocol, do we hear from the public before we ask the Board typically? I forgot. So this is a public hearing. Are there members from the public who are here who have an interest in this matter? There are none, so we'll ask if there are any members of our Board who have any questions or comments on this application, which the Town Manager has deemed to be appropriate. Mr. Morelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wish you good luck and love your restaurant. So best of luck. I did want to make you aware, if you're not already, we're trying to streamline outdoor eating. I know right now you have a little outdoor area, but into parking lots where it can be feasible, we're looking to fast-track that for restaurants such as yours. So I don't know if you're aware of what we're doing, but if not, you can contact Sandy, and we have a lot of information on our website to expedite the process so you'll be able to even serve alcohol outdoors and have a dining experience outdoors. So I wish you the best of luck. I know it's been a tough time in the restaurant business, so.
It is. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Ciao.
Thank you. Any other members of the Board who would like to make a comment or ask a question? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Chairman.
Mr. Bullion.
I would move that the Board vote to approve Spiga's application for a change of officers, ownership interest, and change of manager to Marissa Ioko for its restaurant located at 18 Highland Circle, and to forward this application to the ABCC for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to a roll call vote. Mr. Morelli.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion.
Yes.
Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. That's unanimous. The matter is disposed of and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing us.
Very much wish you well.
Thank you. Grazie.
Be safe.
Danana.
Chairman.
Prago. Yes, Mr. Bullion.
I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Mr. Morelli.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. That's unanimous. That brings us to the item that's noted for 610, which is Updates in Needham's Hazard Mitigation Plan and about the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. And Anne Herbst is the Senior Regional Environment Planner from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, is here, I believe, and she is accompanied by Kim Donovan, Compliance Coordinator for the Needham Department of Public Works. Are they both present?
Yes, this is Anne. I'm present. I'm hoping to share my screen.
Welcome. Is Kim Donovan here as well?
Yes, I am.
Welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
Anne, the floor is yours.
Okay. Sandy, are you able to help me share my screen? I think you have to give me permission.
Sure. Share my screen. That work? Uh, click.
Hasn't happened yet.
Oh, wait.
This one?
It says that you have.
Okay, it's all, I'm sorry. I told you I didn't do this before.
That's okay.
I'm screen sharing the wrong screen.
Yeah.
Stop, share. Okay.
So I think you go to Participants and find me, and then
Analyst.
perhaps make me a co-host is what I'm used to.
Okay.
Oh, it looks like I'm going to be able to do it.
Good. Okay.
Are you now seeing a screen, my screen?
Yeah.
There we are. Yay.
There's hope for us. We're all learning. All right. Thank you. And I want to thank the Select Board for the opportunity to present the work done by a team of town staff. Tonight, we're presenting the final draft of the town's updated hazard mitigation plan, and MAPC has been providing technical assistance on the plan. So the plan will be available for public comment for two weeks, and then we will submit it to MEMA and to FEMA for approval. I'll also provide an update on the planning recently completed by the town, on the climate planning recently completed by the town. So feel free to ask questions as I go along. First, I want to acknowledge the project team that worked on both projects. Rebecca Ping was the original project coordinator, and Kim Donovan took over to see these projects through to completion. You can see we had participation across many of Needham's departments. And I also want to acknowledge Eleanor Rosalini, who volunteered her time representing the Green Needham Collaborative. So this slide gives a quick overview of the two plans Needham has recently completed. Hazard mitigation planning is overseen by FEMA and focuses on natural hazards. The left column lists all the hazards addressed by the hazard mitigation plan. And generally, hazard mitigation plans focus on natural weather-driven occurrences, not terrorism or chemical spills, for example. It's also not an emergency response plan. The focus is really on taking preventative steps to address natural hazards. The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, or MVP, program is sponsored by the state and focuses on climate-related hazards. As it turns out, earthquakes are the only natural hazard not projected to be impacted by climate change. The MVP program is organized around considering impacts to environment, infrastructure, and society. So the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act was passed in the year 2000, and it set a goal for all municipalities around the country to have a hazard mitigation plan. However, that was a goal, not actually a requirement. But FEMA does have a carrot to comply with the goal, and that is that in order to be eligible for FEMA mitigation grants, towns must have a hazard mitigation plan. The impetus for these plans was that FEMA was seeing this cycle of disaster and then rebuilding, and then the same disaster and rebuilding all over again. So the goal of these plans is really to interrupt that cycle. Obviously, disaster events are costly to residents and to the town, and can often involve a lot of human suffering. So we want to analyze our vulnerabilities and address them before the next disaster. So our main effort is to identify the hazards and specifically map them to the town. So we start with higher level data and then work with the team to add local information. And it's really the team that's central to the process. We don't, we can't do anything meaningful without their expertise and knowledge. So we channel that information into a FEMA-required format and populate it with other data that's customized to the town, and it all ends up on GIS maps that the town can also use for other planning processes for open space or master plans. So the local hazard areas identified, the team include flooding and fire. Many of the flooding areas are located outside of FEMA flood zones, and the team also identified areas that may be subject to brush fire. It doesn't necessarily mean these areas have had fires, but that they're generally, that they're wooded areas that could experience brush fire. So we map all sorts of critical facilities and for a range of reasons. So we include disaster response sites like police, fire, and emergency sites that might need assistance, like nursing homes, critical facilities like sewer pump stations and dams, municipal facilities, including schools, and locations that store hazardous materials. And then again, these are overlaid with the flooding and other hazards that we've mapped in order to begin to do the analysis. So this is a list of mitigation measures that existed before Needham adopted its first plan. I certainly won't try to read them all. I really more wanted to give you a sense of the breadth of actions that the town is already taking and the categories of risk they consider. So they range from enforcing regulations to ongoing maintenance, to land protection, to public education. And many of them are really kind of interwoven with the daily tasks that the town departments carry out. So in 2018, the state updated their hazard mitigation plan, and Massachusetts became the first state to fully integrate future climate impacts and hazard mitigation. And the Needham plan has done the same. The potential climate impacts of greatest concern include projections for increased heat, drought, flooding, and a greater intensity and frequency of storms. The MVP planning that took place this year included a one-day workshop where town staff, leadership, and community representatives identified Needham's climate strengths and vulnerabilities and suggested actions to improve Needham's resilience to future climate impacts. That effort informed our work and is referenced in the hazard mitigation plan. We've completed the MVP process, and Needham will soon be certified by the state as an MVP community and therefore eligible to apply for grants to implement those actions. Flooding, power outages, and protecting vulnerable residents were key concerns. Highest priorities included protecting drinking water infrastructure and managing stormwater, ensuring emergency communications capacity with all residents, and managing and protecting town tree cover. So these are sampling the measures identified in the draft hazard mitigation plan. This is really the heart of the plan. These are five-year plans, so these are activities identified that would make sense to carry out in the next five years. They include a range of activities from infrastructure to regulatory strategies to equipment purchases. They address concerns for flooding, drought, energy redundancy, and reliability, tree management, fire issues, and winter storms. So the plan is on the town website, and we'll take comments for the next two weeks. We then submit it to MEMA for their review. The same process happens with FEMA. Once FEMA signs off, they issue what's called an approval pending adoption, which means the content is approved. At that point, the remaining procedural step is that the town needs to adopt it, and that would be the Select Board. So tonight, we're not asking for action. Tonight's is really for information and to provide that public comment period. When it comes back from FEMA, there'll be a request for your adoption. And then after that, FEMA gives final approval, and that's when the plan is good for five years from that date. So, and the plan is, of course, meant to be a living document. It's best to do an annual review to monitor progress and make updates. And then really, even by year four, it's time to get started on the new plan because it's a somewhat lengthy process. So this slide has the link to the plan on the town webpage. You'll find it if you go to the Emergency Management webpage and look for the link to the final draft hazard mitigation plan. And again, we'll take comments until June 23rd. You can see my email contact listed here. You'll also find the final MVP report on the same link, and that's it. So I thank you for the chance to make this presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Anne. Very grateful for your presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the Board?
Can we move back out of screen sharing, please?
You bet.
So we can see everybody again. Mo?
Yes.
So one of the things that's in there is a tree removal mitigation plan, which has been on the Board's list for a number of years. It is something that I'm hoping that we get to. One of the questions that I've asked is, I saw a very interesting presentation by Cambridge about the amount of tree canopy they had lost in a decade. Did anybody look at that as part of developing this? I'd be curious about what that is for Needham.
So we didn't, we didn't look at Cambridge's work. And I think really what this does is identify a goal for the next five years. So really, the next step would be to look at, to figure that out. I will say that trees have been, and particularly in thinking about climate, are both, you know, a tremendous benefit and a challenge. So there's, you know, a need to maintain the tree canopy for a variety of reasons, and also challenges around sort of people's safety around tree falls. So maintaining trees and thinking about what trees will do better in the future, I think, can, are all kind of part of that puzzle. But there, but there wasn't more specific work done at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm at.
Thank, and I just kind of add to that. It's like, it's a blessing and a curse. And one, you know, we had, I think, in my area of town, a microburst come through, and two, you know, streets were closed, and people just restored power a couple of days ago. So when you talk about the right type of trees, making sure the trees are cut back from the power lines, and as we do our street tree and planting to make sure that they're appropriate, so you don't have those hazards while protecting the environment and having the right type of tree canopy. So that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for all this work. It's voluminous, but very interesting, and I know a lot went into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
And the exercise that you folks conducted seems like a lifetime ago. When we could do those things in person was terrific. Any other comments or questions?
Mo, I had, I had one.
Go ahead, Dan.
Or a couple. One was there was some discussion, and if this is too much at the micro level, we can let this go. But it's, there was some discussion about the categorization of Rosemary Street down by the pond as a dam, which is, I guess, an historic fact from 100 and some years ago. But most people think of it as a roadway now with a culvert and a control gate under, under the street, or just where the brook goes under the street. And some talk, there was some talk about changing that categorization. Does that have anything to do with the plan, or are you just reporting that in the plan?
It was really just reporting that. I know it's the Department of Conservation and Recreation Dam Management Program that makes those determinations. And I'm, it wasn't really a major point in the plan. I'm aware from my work that it is not a simple thing to re-categorize a dam.
Okay. Yeah, because I think that would come as a surprise to a lot of people that that is the category. So, but that's okay. Then the second thing was, we're looking at the issue of properties being re-damaged by flooding. And there are, I guess, three properties, as I read the report, that have had multiple flood issues, but they're not things that people would, they're not, as I recall, adjacent to the river or something of that nature. They're not what the, again, that what the layperson would expect to be a repeat flood. We do have stormwater runoff issues, and, but I don't know if you had any comment on that.
Well, I do in the sense that, and you may see it in some of the mapping, we actually had data from March 2010, which people may remember. There was 18 inches of rain in 17 days and a tremendous amount of flooding. It was a, ended up being a federally declared disaster. And one of the things we saw, and this is not, Needham is not unusual in this way, is that well over 90% of the claims that resulted were not in a flood zone, not along the river. It really points to the challenges of stormwater flooding in all urban and suburban areas. I think that's, that's going to be an ongoing issue, you know, as predictions for rainfall increase.
Before we take other comments, we have the Park and Recreation Commission coming in at 6:25. If there are other comments or questions, if Anne is available and can remain, we can do that after that item. If not, we can move on to that item. Will there be any other questions or comments? Anne, thank you so much for your work, and thanks to MAPC. Really do appreciate the help on this and the skill with which it's been done.
Well, thank you, and many thanks to the town staff who worked so hard on it as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to a joint meeting with the Park and Recreation Commission. Are they here? Then can we bring them on? I don't see them yet. Sandy, you're on mute. I can't hear you.
We go. Good evening.
I'm working. I'm working on it.
Nice shirt, Cindy.
Nice top of the pocket.
Thank you. I got about 15 of them.
So will someone, are they?
Matt Toulon is coming.
Okay.
Michelle Geddes is coming.
Okay.
Jason Mulroy is listening.
Should Matt Toulon be here? I'm sorry.
No reason why he shouldn't.
Chris Dell. I think we're good.
All right. Welcome. And a welcome, Chris. You're chairing for the Park and Rec Commission. This is a joint meeting. We're considering a joint appointment for the vacancy left by the sad loss of Dave DeChico. So this would be an appointment to finish Dave's term until the next town election. Is that correct, Kate?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think that Matt is well-known to all of us. Does anybody want to comment on the nomination before we take a vote, and does Matt want to speak to us? Mr. Bullion, and then Ms. Cooley, and then Dan Matthews. John?
I think, I think it's, you know, all of us felt had, you know, extraordinarily warm feelings and towards Dave, and I think it's, you know, I think it's so appropriate. We also have, I also have the same feelings towards Matt. I've known Matt a long time. He's a quality person. He's served on the Park and Rec Commission. And I, I would, I really am strongly supportive of his position on the Park and Rec position. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mary Ann?
So I also would have said we'll all miss Dave, but I am thankful that Matt is willing to recommit to something that he had made a decision to step away from. And thank you for considering and for coming back.
Dan?
I just had one question. The new, the new member of the Board, the Park and Rec Commission, is he able to be here this evening, or?
He will be on our 7:00 Park and Rec Commission call. He still needs to be sworn in by town management, but he will be part of the call tonight for Park and Rec.
Okay, just for my reference, I've already, I saw his name on the ballot, but it slipped out of my mind now.
He is official.
Bruce Williams.
Bruce Williams, yes.
Okay. If I may, yeah, it's important to fill this vacancy. I just wanted to offer a couple of comments because I know you're going from here directly to your, your meeting. And I know that our Board and yours wrestle with some very similar and sometimes overlapping sorts of concerns. So I just figured I would use a minute now just to talk a little bit about it because we don't often get together under this, under the current system. You know, we're coming out of, or we're working through this epidemic that has really disrupted the efforts civic life throughout the country. Here in our town, we're coming into what is the peak, really the peak season for your business, and the, and the public is really looking to you guys for guidance. One of my observations from the work that we've done at Town Hall and coming into town, town meeting, which was a focus of attention for the Board, and it goes to the nomination, is that this is a time of tremendous stress on the resources that we had. One of our constituents said, well, the business of town, of town government has really slowed down during this closing. No, the business hasn't slowed down at all. We've actually had more work to do. We just have a lot less capacity. Buildings are limited and the staff that can be there. Decision-making is much harder to move through. We can't get the kinds of meetings that we have to get together. So this is a time when we're coming into, people are looking, there's a reopening. People are looking to your programs, getting up to speed to the extent that we can. There is a welter of new regulations, and those change all the time. I think as a Select Board member, I want to be as supportive as possible of what you guys are doing. But I want to also say, this is going to be tough. But I want to also say I, this is going to be tough for everybody. Think it's going to come down to, there are some things that the public wants that you guys can do with the resources that you have, and some that it may be better to say, we've got to be careful not to overcommit because otherwise, the resources that we have and the ability of the staff to make sure this work will end up with frustration because the public doesn't necessarily understand the problems we have. This is one of the things that I think makes it good that Matt, who served on the board the recent years, so now you've got a new director coming on, these difficult arrangements that we're talking about, that we had to work through, high expectations, and hopefully a terrific season coming up this summer. So I'm all in favor of the nomination. Thank you for agreeing to come back on, Matt. And I'm in favor, I'm in full support. Good luck to you all.
Thank you.
What I'm going to do here is I'm going to hear from Matt. We're all going to hear from Matt, and then I'm going to pass the gavel to Chris to query the Park and Rec Board and to also administer the vote the vote from Park and Rec Commission before we vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't know what that sound is. I echo Dan's comments, and I, the loss of Dave is a huge loss for all of us and for your commission and consistency, Matt, that you're going to bring. As Dan just said, it's going to be very welcome. I know the commission has difficult decisions as far as the pool and camp. And, you know, as one member and as the board, we support what you're trying to do. I know it's very difficult, and we support those decisions. And I know it's going to be, as Dan was saying, some tough yeses and some tough noes to the public. But full confidence that we'll get moving through this, and I thank you for all your work during this very difficult time. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt, and I echo my colleagues' comments as well. Chris, the floor and gavel are yours for your board, your commission's comments, and and then for the whole part of the vote. And then if you pass the gavel back to me, I'll take the roll call for the select board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really do appreciate this, and to see the support coming from all of town management, being Kate Fitzpatrick, I know Katie King, our new assistant town manager, is on this call. It's great to actually finally meet you. But to have the overwhelming support of the select board behind us does give us that comfort factor. And you're right, these are trying times that none of us have ever been through. But I think with the consistency of keeping Commissioner Toulon on the group with us, we work very well as a team, and that's what we're looking for right now is the consistency. And to have the support and be as a team, even with a new member of Bruce Williams, I think with adding Mr. Toulon for the remainder of the year just helps us get over that hump and helps us get through the times that we're going through today. So I will ask any other of the Park and Rec Commissioners, any further comments in regards to Matt Toulon joining us back again for the remainder of the term? Commissioner Chastain?
Thank you. Are you getting a telephone?
I think we all mute.
If everybody else mutes, it'll work.
Okay. How's that? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to say for the third time because I mean it so much. Thank you for the select board, for your support. We greatly appreciate it. And speaking for the Park and Rec Commission, I can tell you personally, Ms. Dave DeChico very much, he was a friend of mine as well as a longtime commissioner that we served together on not just the commission, but some work in the Exchange Club. And I do really miss him. However, when we, Chris and I talked about asking Matt if he would consider staying on for a year, and I can't tell you how I had my fingers crossed hoping that he would say yes because he's put in yeoman's work for the last, I think, two terms plus that he's been on the commission. So thank you very much to Matt Toulon for saying yes, and we are thrilled to have him continue with us. So thank you for your support to the select board, and thank you, Matt, for agreeing to serve another year.
All right, Commissioner Geddes, anything to follow up on?
I mean, nothing that's inconsistent. We're really happy. I thought it was a stretch that Matt would agree to continue on for another year. So always happy to work together with Matt. So thank you all, and we're happy that we can continue on as a as a group.
Wonderful. Can we hear from the man of the hour, Mr. Matt Toulon? Oh, one second.
No, sorry. So you want to hear from me? Well, thank you all for the kind words and everything. Happy to to try and support Dave's big shoes. As everybody had mentioned, he's a great commissioner, a great asset to our town. So happy to help bridge this and get us through until the next election.
Great, Matt. Thank you. All right, so I guess we'll make this official. So the Park and Rec Commission will take an official vote, and then I'll hand the gavel back to the chairman of the select board. So I would like to make a motion to have Matt Toulon finish out the term on the Park and Rec Commission until the next town election in 2021.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All right, for the Park and Rec Commission, all those in favor, I will take a roll call. Commissioner Chastain?
Aye.
Commissioner Geddes?
Aye.
And the chair is also an aye, so it passes unanimously. I will now hand the gavel back to Mo Handel, the select board chairman.
Thank you. So for the select board, for purposes of our record, can I have a motion?
I would move that the select board vote to appoint Matt Toulon to the Park and Rec Commission for the final year of Mr. DeChico's term, which ends in 2021. Or actually, I was going to suggest a lifetime appointment. Okay, 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 okay. 2021. Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion of the motion?
Can I make one more comment?
Mary Ann Cooley?
It's separate from Matt Toulon, who I still intend to vote yes for. But I do want to take this time, I should have said first, thank you to Parks and Rec because they also worked with us over the last week and a half for loaning us Greensfield for the summer for some picnic tables for the takeout business. So I appreciate your working with us on that initiative for our merchants as well. Thanks.
We're all part of the same team.
We are.
Thanks, Mary Ann. And you did vote? Did you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Wait, is this where we're supposed to vote for Matt Toulon?
Yes.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, I vote for Matt Toulon.
The chair votes yes, so that's unanimous with respect to both boards. Congratulations, Matt, and thank you so much for serving. And I echo Mary Ann's comments about the cooperation of Park and Rec with respect to Greensfield and many of the other things that will be happening around helping the restaurants get going and staying viable through the summer. So again, thank you. And I, we're happy to have you come anytime. Thanks, Chris.
Everybody, everybody.
Bye, bye, Cindy. Bye, Matt. Bye. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is at 6:45. That's a public hearing? Not a public hearing. So can we do the item earlier than it is posted? Then that item is alteration of premises for Ray's New Garden Restaurant. Is there anybody here from the restaurant?
It's Christina Tyler. Christina, Christina.
That's right.
Ray, there's Ray.
Hi, Christine.
Yeah, hi, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hey, Ray.
So there is an application for this? Is the application in order, Kate?
Yes.
Would the applicant care to make any statement with respect to the application?
We are trying to serve the outdoor dining as soon as we get approval from the board. So if any question you'd like to ask us, I'm more than happy to answer it.
Thank you, Ray. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Ray, I saw your plan. I think it's a terrific plan. And I just want to say I wish you luck. I know it's been very difficult, but to move outside with the plan that you have, I think I hope that that brings you some success. And I know we spoke about your hours, and you said 11 o'clock you would be willing to have your time in for service, clear the tables.
We are planning to have a last sitting at 10:00.
Yep.
So 11 o'clock will be cleared.
Okay, terrific. So I think this is a great step to move outside, and I wish the best of luck, Ray.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Mary Ann Cooley had her hand up.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ray. Ray actually came in to us right away when we started to open things up with a proposal and gave us an initial proposal that actually clarified some of our thinking about how we wanted to put together the outdoor spot. So I really appreciate your working with us to develop what I think will be an excellent plan, and I hope it works very well for you, Ray. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I hope we try our best for the business and for the public, too.
Thank you, Ray. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, I'm glad to hear about your your plan to have everything cleaned by 11:00. I think that's a good one. You know, you're in, you're all in an all-business area, but you do have residences that are not that far away on the other side of the rail right away. And this, I'm just underscoring, usually this is the kind of thing that requires a note. Before the special statute, this kind of extension of an to an outdoor area would require a noticed public hearing with with advertising to a butters and then posting in the newspaper. I think it makes a lot of sense to get this moving, to help our business, you and other businesses that are going to do the same thing get open. But we really are counting on you to run it carefully. I think particularly noise is going to be the issue. And if you can, if you can manage that, that will be great. I want to wish you all the best, but I felt I wanted to just underline that for you now. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Dan. We're not trying, we won't disappoint you. Basically, you know, it's a dinner crowd, you know, so it's not like you're running a bar inside. So it'll be, it'll be very low-key. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Ray. John Bullion?
Thank you. Ray, no, this looks like a good plan. I have a general question that that maybe Ray and or Mary Ann might might address, which hasn't really come up before. You know, we're moving to an outside dining dynamic here. What's what's the anticipated plan with regard to weather? You know, obviously, in a normal time, if there's outdoor seating and it starts raining, people can quick and a hurry run inside, but they can't do that this time. So there's no, so what's the anticipated plan? Either Ray and or Mary Ann or both of you with respect to the the outside dining? And, you know, obviously, everyone's going to be looking at the weather. But what's what's the thought on this?
It's a, it's a good question. We've been talking about it internal. We are thinking about at first, you know, set up a tent, but that's way too expensive. And now we are, we are anticipating about getting the canopy, which each table will have a canopy themselves. It's open-ended. So we'll have a cover on top. So when it rains, you know, at least customers don't have to running for a cover. So I think that will take care of it.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Yeah, I'd like to.
So I think that is something that the group has been talking about, and whether it's tents or canopies or something, we're going to be interested in seeing the plan for that. And if somebody is interested in doing other of those, we're willing to take a look at it.
Yep, yep, that's what we we are trying to do. But anything will be, we need a few days to address. At the beginning, maybe we'll put some embalts up there, you know. So we try, we are trying to not having a panic situation when a, when what happened a couple of days ago, you know, everybody running for a cover, you know. So we're trying, we really look hard into it.
Thank you.
Business-wise and for the safety of the public.
So weather forecasts are going to be an important part of all of our establishments throughout the town.
Absolutely.
That's a good observation, Mr. Bullion. Kate, did you, you have something to add here?
I just wanted to add to what Mary Ann had said about Ray having come in early and giving us really kind of a case study in terms of how to move forward. And one of the things the board was really helpful with is that we were able to purchase some Jersey barriers that we know we'll be able to use in the future in our Department of Public Works. We're going to be able to loan them out to restaurants in order to make sure that they can open because we need to make sure that we separate the diners and the cars that are driving. So just another way, just another example of something that we hadn't thought of that we're able to do. And if people have other ideas or other ways that we can help with the retail and restaurant businesses, we're really all ears.
Thank you, Kate.
Mary Ann, did you have anything else to add or? I just want to say, I want to thank Ray for bringing this to us. I think it's a good example of what can be done. We're in a time of great experimentation and innovation due to the circumstances we find ourselves in. The restaurant segment of our economy is very important, both to the economics of the town, but also as our identity as a destination community. So this is very important to us, and we wish you the best. So that's, we'll take a vote on this unless there is any other questions or comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move at the board vote pursuant to COVID-19 Order Number 35 to authorize the alteration of premises of Ray's New Garden, 40 Chestnut Place Needham, to include a portion of the parking lot as shown on the attached drawings.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bullion, seconds, we come to the vote. Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews? Mr. Bullion? Mr. Matthews voted yes. Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous.
It is a yes for me, too. I was muted there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All the best.
Right, all the best.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the town manager's report. And the first item on that is the naming of the public safety building, Community Room. And that came up before, before this board. And Ms. Fitzpatrick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At your last meeting, Chief Schlittler proposed that the board name the community room after officers Haddock and McLeod. And we, the town's policy is to allow for a period of public comment, and we did not receive any comment during that period. So I would ask the board to go ahead and name the community room at the new public safety complex in order of police officers Francis Oliver Haddock and Forbes Alexander McLeod, who lost their lives in service to the town meeting.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Borelli?
I I move that the board vote to name the community room of the new public safety complex in honor of police officers Francis Oliver Haddock and Forbes Alexander McLeod, who lost their lives in service to the town of Needham.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any comment or discussion before we take the vote? Mr. Borelli?
Mr. Chair, I just think, especially in these times, such a great reminder of the sacrifice that police make these two individuals. And then thinking even, you know, a month ago, two months ago with COVID, putting themselves in harm's way where we didn't really know what was going on, and every day putting themselves in harm's way to protect us and the citizens of this town. So very fitting, and I think it's a great tribute to these two officers who lost their lives in those circumstances. Thank you.
And if I may observe that although it seems like it was a very long time ago, there are residents of this town who were alive when this happened, and some residents who remember how this event was in the collective memory of the town. So it's easy for us to forget, living now, what has happened historically in this town with respect to that event. And with that said, we come to the vote. Mary Ann? Cooley?
Yeah.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you, Kate. You have one other item.
Just a quick item, Mr. Chair. You already mentioned the team that, the very big team led by Karis that put together the town meeting. Really, it couldn't have been a more beautiful night. And I think people who were there felt, from what I've heard, they felt that the health precautions were adequate, and they were really part of history. I wanted to mention, and I greatly thank them, but I really wanted to thank the town meeting members, so many of whom came. And I know many of them were worried, and they came. And the board and the finance committee for recommending that we keep the plan. Needham, we do a lot of planning and we keep to our planning, and it's always done as well. But I think the town meeting was, they really understood that you don't change the plan without any information. So we're just so appreciative of that, and we will be watching to see what happens on the state level and keeping you updated. But I really think it was the way, the way, the best way for the town to move forward. It's consistent with our sustainability model, and I was so gratified by the overwhelming support of the town meeting on that regard. The, so the town's staff's attention is moving from how to handle the pandemic to how to handle the reopening, how to handle the reopening of our, of our restaurants and our retail shops and our, our offices. And then now that we're through town meeting, I, I assume, Mr. Chair, I need to pull out the board's goals for the year, many of which have probably been languishing, and see how many of them we can get done in the last two weeks of the fiscal year. So you may hear more about the goals at your meeting at the end of June. So we may need to strategize on how many of those we're going to make. But thank you for your leadership with the, with the town meeting and the budget and the capital plan.
Thank you, Kate. And I think we would be remiss not to thank you for the extraordinary work that you did. And the Town Clerk for the work her office did on this, and for the moderator who went along with something he had never seen before and was able to carry it off as if there had been no difference. So it was quite an amazing meeting and one for the history books, and we were all there.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? All right, then we can move to the last item, which is a board discussion of economic development and the committee that Mary Ann Cooley heads with respect to getting our restaurants open as fast as we can and the other businesses as well.
So I wanted to give the board a quick update with the work that has gone on over the course of the last week since the last time we met. The Wednesday morning meeting group will continue and meets again tomorrow morning. We also have a planned Zoom call with all the merchants from the Chapel Street block to talk about some possible use of the parking lot, the Chapel Street lot, as a dining area for the restaurants to share in that block. So we'll talk with them about a proposal for that and how they might work together maybe to have some additional outdoor space. In the meantime, Sandy has been in touch with our restaurants in town, and a number of them have taken her up on our offer to send in a plan for something that they would like to do for outdoor seating at their particular establishment. A number are proposing some small cabaret tables, just a table for two. And that is something that we would propose to permit on the sidewalk as long as there is still four feet of clearance for ADA purposes. So in each case, we've tried to look at proposals and decide what the town's principles are that need to be carried forward. So we have strong principles. This four feet of clearance on sidewalks is an absolute mandatory requirement. The ability to think carefully if something is going in a parking lot or in a place where a car could just come rolling to it, so that the Jersey barriers and strong barriers are in place to prohibit some accident from happening with pedestrians or with seated patrons who are either eating takeout or eating served food from the restaurant as this outdoor dining stage commences. We will also look at, as Ray just suggested, he started with thinking about a tent, now he's thinking about, you know, some other kind of canopy, but, you know, some kind of covering. And I suspect other people will think about that similar, there are similar standards for how that could possibly exist. Meanwhile, the state has carried on as well, and they have now passed the legislative relief that we were looking for, so that the town does have the ability to make alterations of permit, of the premises for this purpose directly within the town. So we're grateful that that has happened, which lets us go forward. We do know that for all of us that this is, you know, whether you call it coloring outside the lines or moving way outside our comfort zone, that is this. It is an experiment in many ways, and so far, so good with what we've done. It looks like it's been well-received. And as we keep checking in with both Chiefs, they will both say that the public has actually been great about how they've handled it so far. And it's been highly successful, at least in terms of the last couple of weeks that we've been open with takeout. This is another layer as we expand for the outdoor dining. But the more we can do, the better. I want to thank Tim McDonald. So we'll actually take a look at a grant opportunity that he identified, which hopefully might help us to pay for some of our Jersey barriers. So knock on wood, and we'll try and get that one through to cover some of those costs. And I'm grateful to Eddie Olson, his team, as they have renovated picnic tables, recovered any picnic table they can find, and maybe built a couple extra picnic tables that have been useful for this outdoor dining. So several things happening. I'm hoping that with tomorrow's Zoom call, that we might learn some more things from talking directly to the merchants, either in terms of ideas that they need or from some of the non-food merchants, trying to understand if there are ways that we can be helpful for them as well, as they're trying to do business this new way with limited capacity indoors and, and what might actually be accomplished. So I'm grateful to everybody for helping. I think we continue to go forward and continue to ask, you know, how can we help you, which is what we're really trying to do with the merchants in town as we move forward.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Mary Ann, are, I mean, are the rules, do the rules designate that reservations be required for the dining outdoors? Or is that not something that's mandated? Or how, how does that work in?
So we haven't specified that. I think that's up to the restaurants with how they're going to handle that space. When we talk about shared spaces or shared table spaces, I, I think we're going to try to talk to the restaurants about how they want to work out using that. That's not something the town is going to navigate for them.
Okay, and going back to the example that I had with, when Ray was, was on, you know, have we given guidance to the restaurants? Should there be people sitting outdoors and it starts to rain and there's no covering? People, you know, they, the restaurants understand people can't go running for cover inside the restaurants. They do know that.
They do know that.
Okay.
All right. John, I do, there is permission now for restaurants to use their bathrooms. So if it is a restaurant that is open for that, then they probably could run inside as long as they can be distanced for that momentary bit.
Okay.
Now, Mary Ann, I'll call on you next, Matt, but I understand you are going to be making a motion to?
I am going to make a motion for the board. So part of what we would propose is that, given that the declaration of emergency has come out, that gives the town the ability to do this, and we'll continue to update the board with kind of what's coming forward and what kind of decisions are getting made. I do have a proposed motion for the board to consider that would let us really delegate to the town manager with asking her to report to the board for actions, so that she can take immediate actions or timely actions as things go on without requiring that the board meet, you know, every few days to try to continue to be responsive to merchants. And our proposal, originally, we talked about doing this through Labor Day. The delegation of authority that we're proposing would be in effect until November 1st, which is really the end of our outdoor dining period for other people who have outdoor dining. But it does say that, you know, things are subject to change. So I do think that if we were to find some situation is untenable for some reason, then we'll go back to work with a particular merchant if, if something occurs.
So is there a second to Ms. Cooley's motion?
Well, would people like me to read the whole motion? Or does Matt actually want to? I think there was still sort of some continued discussion. So if there's more discussion about the general idea, then I'm happy to read the whole motion.
I, I jumped ahead. I'm sorry, Mary Ann. Go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Chair, one of my questions was about the motion, so that's good. The second, number two, the amount of, the flexibility that Mary Ann, the group has shown, town staff has shown, the communication's shown, has been just unbelievable, streamlining I've heard from restaurants. And I think we're just an example for surrounding towns and cities, again, that we're the leaders, this is how to get things done. So I commend you on this. And tonight was a first step with New Garden, and I am all for giving the town manager that flexibility so that these restaurants can open ASAP, because a week to them is like a, you know, a month. So I think we need to give that flexibility. I will say, I was contacted by a restaurant in Newton looking for furniture, because apparently there's a run on furniture, outdoor furniture, when these restaurants are opening. So I don't know if you've talked to these restaurants, if the town can put on Facebook asking residents or, or come up with a way for people. I donate my patio table that I don't use, but for people to donate if they deem it necessary to them, to allow them to get the furniture that they need if they're struggling with it. It just might be something to ask in the group.
That's a nice gesture.
Other than that, I, again, terrific job. Thank you.
Interesting thought. Thank you.
Mary Ann, why don't you make the motion, so I don't jump ahead again?
So the motion reads, "Consistent with Governor Baker's declaration of emergency and to provide timely response to businesses reopening in the town of Needham under occupancy and other operational limitations, the Select Board hereby authorizes the town manager to grant all local approvals necessary to allow existing local businesses to utilize outdoor seating and parking lots, on-street parking spaces, sidewalks, landscaped yard areas, or other appropriate locations to provide more space to serve patrons. This delegation of authority will remain in effect until November 1, 2020, or until the declaration of emergency is rescinded, whichever is sooner. Applications for modifications to existing permits and licenses to allow for outdoor seating in response to COVID, including but not limited to right-of-way occupations, alcohol, alcohol licenses, common victualers licensing, entertainment licenses, and zoning permits, will be reviewed by the town staff and may be approved by the town manager. Approvals will be temporary and consistent with the terms of the declaration of emergency and the orders issued in response thereto. In accordance with current emergency orders issued by the governor and the ABCC, and notwithstanding any statutory authorization to the contrary, strict adherence to local bylaws may be altered or waived administratively as part of this process on a temporary basis. Approvals of outdoor seating areas and other permitted uses of the public spaces may be subject to terms and conditions and shall be subject to change or revocation at the town's sole discretion. Operators may be required to work with the town and nearby businesses to accommodate the greatest number of operators as possible within limited available outdoor spaces. Periodic reports from the town manager to the Select Board will be given on these applications, and a detailed record of all approved modifications will be maintained on the town website at www.nitema.gov."
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Bullion?
Mary Ann, another question is, what is the status or what's the thinking on, or has anybody requested entertainment outside?
So I don't know if we've actually, I can't recall if we've actually had a request for entertainment. The decision is that the Wednesday working group needs to have a discussion about entertainment, and I'm hoping that we will start that discussion tomorrow. We have not had a specific request, as far as I know, for that. Okay. Sandy's confirming, no request yet. We, we are anticipating it could come forward, and I, I think there's some concern about entertainment that we definitely want to talk about.
I, I would concur. You know, obviously, I, I mean, I would think quiet entertainment, you know, but, you know, understanding outside, there could be competing entertainment within parts of the downtown. It could get a little bit cumbersome, and obviously, any restaurants that are, that border residential areas, time limits have to be looked upon as well to make sure that, you know, reasonable, you know, peace and enjoyment by the neighborhood is, is in place.
The, and the approach we've taken, John, is to look at how much we can implement quickly and then go step by step by step, but to try to move quickly to get people up and going. And, and this motion gives us the ability to do that. And yes, that could be an issue, and then we'll have to deal with it when it comes up. Any other questions or comments?
Good work.
Yes, nice work, Mary Ann. We have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. So we come to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you. Is there any other committee reports? Or do you have any further reports on your, on your committee, Mary Ann? Any other committees? Or not aware of any? So we now come to a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's a made, motion made and seconded. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And again, thank you, Kate, to you and your staff and for organizing this meeting and all the other activities you've been doing over the last several weeks. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.